Good morning, welcome to City Council Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020. At this time, please join us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
You'll pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, just thank you for this day and thank you for the privilege of living in this great city. Lord, I simply ask that all that we do and that all that we say is pleasing to you. I ask for continued safety for our first responders. Ask for continued peace and sharing of kindness in our community. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. At this time, we have the minutes to approve from the November 13th meeting.
May they be approved.
Motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we have a hearing. Who's doing the hear- who's doing H1?
You may have an old version of the agenda there. I think it's P1 is the first item.
Well, I'm sorry, I've got an old version.
It's on the screen.
Okay, hold on.
But the P1 is the MPO presentation.
Okay, well, come on, P1.
Michael Howell will be handling that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am Michael Howell. I'm here this morning representing the Tyler area Metropolitan Planning Organization, so everybody can just call it the MPO for short. So, it'll be a whole lot easier. Just wanted to come in today and just give you a quick highlight on what the MPO has done over the past year and the work items are going to be coming up over the next year. But first of all, just wanted to, again, let everybody know what an MPO is. A Metropolitan Planning Organization is a transportation planning organization that is regional, so it is made up of multiple entities that are invested in transportation implementation throughout the entire region. An MPO is something that is actually required by the state for any urbanized area that has over 50,000 in population. There's currently 25 MPOs that go all throughout the state of Texas, so the number actually could increase based off of the information that comes out of the 2020 census, so we're actually interested to see how that comes about. But Tyler was designated an urbanized area, so the 50,000 getting an MPO in 1974. Just to give you an idea of the area that it covers, if you're looking right now at Smith County and everything that you see in the blue region is what the actual MPO area covers. So, you see, it's the majority of Smith County and it covers all the main cities that are in the area. The membership is led by a committee of elected and appointed officials. Our chair is the mayor of Tyler, is Martin Hines, and there are also membership that include other members from the city of Tyler. There are three total members. There's three from other cities in the Smith County area. We have three actual representations from Smith County itself, including the county judge, and then one from the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, which is the authority that manages Toll 49, and then one from Tech dot as well. So, the duties for the MPO involve, really involving the public in the transportation planning process. The other things that the MPO does is monitors other things that affect transportation planning, like the monitoring population growth, land use trends, employment changes, anything like that. And, of course, the biggest thing is traffic volumes and traffic counts, the things that we try to keep available. Some of the more recent projects that the staff has worked on is that back in 2016, there was a program that we did, that we did a study for the Old Jacksonville corridor, and that is one of those plans that is actually currently being put into effect right now with the current projects that are being done to widen that corridor right now. So, we had a lot of public involvement and so we have some great projects coming out from that. We also wrapped up what was called the Active Tyler Plan, which was the regional hike and bike plan. So, it was looking at all of the areas throughout the entire region and seeing how we could try to connect all the various cities through non-vehicular modes of transportation. We're really excited with that one. After the plan was adopted, which was just in March of this previous year, there were six applications that we know of that was made for grants for different hike and bike projects that were going throughout the entire region. So, those have all gone to the state. We're hoping that at least we'll see a few of those begin to move forward for additional progress. Last thing I wanted to touch on was a plan that we adopted, it was just this past November, which was called the Tyler Area Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is just the big term for the long-range transportation plan, which is looking at a 25-year and prioritizing what transportation projects in the region that we would be looking at trying to implement with the funding that is going to be coming in. It was about a year-long project to complete the entire project. There was open houses that we had, so the public could come in. We did a fairly robust Facebook campaign, trying to get public input on that, and also had a link to a project website where people could go in and leave specific comments through that. We even gave you a screenshot, you can see right there. Every one of the little icons that you see that goes along there is an actual comment that was left by somebody from the public saying what they wanted to see come from their plan. Just to give you an idea of the results from it, we've gone ahead and give you, again, here's the plan for the entire region. You can see the MPO boundary on the outside, and the colored sections you can see is what the recommended projects are coming out from that. The ones that you see in blue are the ones that are going for immediate construction going to be going forward, and then as it gets more into the purple-red, and then the green is going to be the more long-term that you're going to be seeing going through there. But it's projects that range from Old Jacksonville in the near term, going all the way out to Highway 31, and I-20 being in the long-term areas. So, we capped the whole process with a 30-day public comment period that started in October. Common themes that came out from the public comment period that we heard back at the end of it was need for improvement on the traffic signals that were coming through, the installation and enhancement of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and expanding transit service to reduce the wait times and increase hours of operation. So, one of the things I want to go ahead and point out and acknowledge is that the city of Tyler has been working on a plan to improve traffic signalization on South Broadway. So, it's one of those things that is already being done to address the need that was identified. Again, there were the six projects that were submitted for the grants to install more pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. And as far as the transit services, that brings us to some of the work items that we have coming up on this next year. First one I wanted to highlight is that we are working on a transit route study right now. We've just put out a request for proposals to try to hire a firm that would come in and do this work for us, that would try to do a coordinated transit route study, both for Tyler Transit, to try to improve its routes, and also try to have better connection points with the other providers in the area, such as the Go Bus. We're also working on an update for the master street plan that is going throughout the entire region, that has all plans for all the corridors that would be going through, and has recommendations for what the ultimate capacity for each one of those would be. So, it helps during the development process and is a tool to try to make sure that the ultimate infrastructure is going to be there. And the other thing I wanted to highlight that the staff has been championing is trying to support the efforts going towards the 2020 census. There has been a local coalition that has been formed by, it's being chaired by Nancy Rangel with the Tyler Hispanic Business Alliance, and it is called a Complete Count Committee that is trying to champion the efforts that is going towards the 2020 census. And it's very important that we get the best count through that that we possibly can, because it does impact so many things. There are very many grants that come through and funding that comes from the federal government that is tied to that number. So, to make sure that the correct number and what is actually due for this area is coming through here to support our area is what we're trying to make sure that we get across to everybody, and we want to make sure that everybody hopefully responds to it when the opportunity arises. So, last thing I just wanted to share with everybody is just the information from our website right now. If anybody wants to see any of the plans that have been previously adopted, access traffic data, or sign up for any notifications, they can go to our website for that. If anybody has any questions or comments about latest things that the MPO's been working on, I'd love to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I've got one. So, the map that you had to show the items that are short-term, long-term?
Yes.
What gets something in the pipeline? Does Tech stock come to us? Do we go to Tech dot? What gets something?
It's a mixture of the two. With the Metropolitan, the MPO has a policy committee that, again, is made up for the elected officials from the various boards. Whenever we were going through the process, we had a call for projects, so anybody from one of these entities, so it could be from the city, from the county, from anybody, could say, "I want to nominate a project that we have," and it goes onto that list. Everything that you're seeing right there is what we call, is in, what we're showing is being the funded category. So, we actually did a forecast for how much funding we think we're going to get in the area over the next 25 years, and here's the projects we think we could actually afford to put in based off of that. However, we do have another section that we just have listed, which is the unfunded category. So, there are other projects that are in that plan that if additional funding became available, that we would be able to program additional projects in there. So, we want to try to be ready and be flexible with it if additional funding becomes available.
And, you're going.
I've never understood how the MPO is connected to the RMA. Do they share boards, or do you have any authority over Loop 49?
No, we really don't have any authority. Now, we do have one of their members who is on the MPO board to try to, again, just to have that cooperation between the two, just so we can be aware of what they're doing. But the RMA, yet, they have their own board. It is made up of various representatives that have been selected from, I think it's a 14-county area that they have, so, and they-
I just didn't know if you had any interaction, because I didn't see it on the map here at all with regard to the-
Oh, as far as Toll 49?
Yeah.
The way, that's a very good question, I'm glad you asked. So, we're not showing anything with Toll 49 on our map, because what we're showing here is the money that we see coming in that is going to be federal funding and where it's going to be spent. The toll road is actually being funded through strictly by the toll revenues that are coming through, so they're not asking for any federal funds. So, we do have it incorporated with our long-range plans, but that's why you're not seeing the actual project on the list right here.
And we will actually have, I want to say, either the first meeting in February or the second meeting in February, a representative from RMA here to present the Toll 49 extension project for council, just for your information, and to kind of get any feedback that y'all have.
And when you say, when you talk about funding, you say "we," I mean, that is federal funds. It's not-
Correct.
-local taxpayer money, it's not being spent on this project.
That's completely correct. Yeah, what you're seeing right here is that our area's distribution of the federal tax dollars that we get for transportation projects. And, again, that is one of those things that is connected to the census count, which all the more reason, again, why it's very important for us to try to make sure we get as accurate a count as possible.
Correct. Great. Any more questions?
I do have a question of Heather.
Yeah, Nick.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
There wasn't a question, I was just-
Thank you, sir.
But I wanted you up front to say.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go to H1.
Morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager.
Morning.
Coming to you today to talk about the juvenile curfew that's been in place since 1994. It's been a, and continues to be a valuable piece for a tool that we use at Police Department every day, or every year. Last year, we issued 19 citations for curfew violations. I think it's a low number, because it really doesn't take into account if we catch somebody committing a crime like a burglary or something like that, that they're dealt with under those statutes. But I think the tool for us, it allows us after hours, you know, any day of the week, except for Friday and Saturday, from 11:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning, individuals younger than 17 years of age are supposed to be at home. On Friday and Saturday night, that hour goes to 12:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning. We see somebody out, it allows us the opportunity that we believe they're younger than that age to contact them, to have a conversation with them, but it also not only prevents them from possibly engaging in criminal activity, but it takes them out of calculation to be victimized by other people during those hours that may be out doing something. As we continue going forward, it's been a valuable tool for us. We, by government code, are required to come back to you every three years and request that you hold a public hearing, as we decide whether or not we want to renew it. But I'm standing here in front of you today to tell you, it is a valuable tool that we use on a regular basis to protect the citizens, but also the children of Tyler. So, we ask today that you request the City Council conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance for amending Tyler City Code 4 relating to renewal of the juvenile curfew ordinance.
Is there anyone here today to speak on this item, or would like to speak on this Seeing no one coming forward to the microphone, I would just like to say that I have not had, in my entire term as council member and mayor, we have not had one complaint about this. I have not heard one complaint about this, and that's how I'm assuming with not hearing that and no one here to speak about it, that it is seen very favorably by our citizens and a valuable tool, so.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other comments?
No.
Do we, go ahead and, do we need to pass it, or do we just need to have it here?
I don't believe any of this.
You do need to take action to-
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to that.
McGee, a second. McKeller. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now on to Z1. Oh, I didn't know you were going to present, although they'd done it this time. I thought it was going to be Kyle.
Well-played.
Yeah.
Good morning, Council.
Well, I mean, when you say "well-played," am I supposed to say, "Are we having a moment here?"
Uh-oh.
Remember that State Farm, State Farm commercial?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
With our local Mahoney. State Farm commercial. Sorry.
Anyone? Okay.
Okay.
So, our first application is for a change to request for a larger signage. It's for United Way, and they are located in the women's building. They are currently zoned adaptive reuse, which they obtained the adaptive reuse AR zoning in 2016 to allow for the office use that's currently there. This change is simply to allow for a little bit larger signage on this property. It is a planned office development request, and it's not changing the footprint of the building, it's simply to allow for office signage allowances. So, it is consistent with the surrounding properties, where we see First Presbyterian, Hogg Middle School, we have a park across the street, and they all are allowed to have signage that is in line with what's being requested today. It does not allow for an electric message center sign, so no EMC signs, and the narrative that you see here on the site plan shows the addition of the signage that's being requested. We do have our representative here from United Way to speak in favor, and with that, we had no opposition to this case, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of the Planned Office Development Pod with the narrative that includes the signage.
Any questions of Heather? Is there any? The executive director for the United Way is here, if you would like to have comment from him.
I don't have any comments. I would like to tell John, number one, thank you for your commitment to the Isaiah District, for all the improvements that you've made to the women's building. That thing is, in my world, we call it a money pit, because it's an old structure and it takes a lot of money to not only remodel it, but to keep it up. So, thank you for your commitment to that. I love what you're doing, I love the project, and with that being said, I move to approve Z1.
I have a motion from Warren, a second from Westbrook. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Z2?
This is a request for a special use permit for a daycare center for an after-school program for three years. The surrounding properties are a mixture of single-family homes, undeveloped land, and a middle school. The SUP would be for an initial duration of three years. The council does have the authority to withdraw that if, should anything fall out of line with the special use permit requirements, and the structure currently on this property is very similar to surrounding structures in that it has a residential character. It's approximately 2,000 square feet, and the applicant is currently in the process to apply for a license from the state of Texas for the after-school program. As of Friday, January 17th, we had no notices returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of the special use permit for three years.
I do have two cards here, but do we have any questions? Would you like to come up and speak?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, come on. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Lakisha Price, address 1027 Old Moon Day Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when I came here the last time, it was told to me that this particular building did not have a CO prior, and I had to pay, you know, $520 for a special use permit. But here, I found, Ms. Melanie Roberts found that a CO was done September 12, 2007, and it was zone R3, and I was just trying to figure out what's the difference between R3 and then multifamily, because this is what it states on this.
Yep. Heather will answer that.
Okay. R3 and multifamily are the same thing. Multifamily used to be just designated, and our code is R3 in the past.
Right, that's, right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
So, is she the one, are you the one that's going to have the school?
Yeah.
Yep. Would, do you have any questions?
No, that was the question.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay. Any other questions?
Move to approve Z2.
A motion by McGee, a second by Sellers. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you as well, Ms. Roberts, she had a card, but I didn't, I didn't see you jumping up to come talk, so, okay. Thank you very much. Z3?
This is a request to allow for a required distance variance for the Fork and Feast Restaurant. The, this is for a special use permit to reduce the required 300-foot distance requirement that is set out by the TABC, the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, to sell mixed beverages for indefinite period of time. The properties in this location are all zoned C1 and are developed with commercial as well as an undeveloped property to the east. While the lot lines of the school property are within 300 feet of this property, the tenant space in which the alcohol would be served is more than 300 feet away from the school property. There is also a six-foot-high fence, as well as natural vegetation, and a public thoroughfare between the school property and this subject property. As of Friday, January 13, 13 notices were mailed, and one was returned in favor, no in opposition, and of the seven, or, the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Heather? We do have a card, but only for questions. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve Z3.
Motion by Sellers, a second by McGee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you. Z4?
This is a request to change the zoning from office to light commercial, C1. The surrounding properties are apartments, also a gas station and laundry, as well as a church. The future land use guide would be changed to neighborhood commercial from multifamily if this were approved today, and the request is to change this property to C1 in order to allow for commercial uses. In 2007, the property was rezoned from multifamily to office and has remained vacant since, and so the owner would like to market this for commercial uses, and it does seem to be in keeping with the surrounding properties, and it would allow for a buffer yard between the multifamily and the commercial zoning. The, of the nine notices mailed, none were returned in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Any questions of Heather?
I'm just glad to see that there could be some forward progress in this. It sat idle for quite some time. So, with that, I move to approve.
Second? Motion by Westbrook, a second by Warren. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Z5?
The applicant is requesting a change in order to develop a single-family home, and this area is predominantly developed with single-family homes and, as well as some undeveloped property. This is consistent with the future land use guide, and also consistent with the Tyler First objective to add 3,000 more households to the north end, as well as the downtown area. Of the notices mailed, one was, none in favor or in opposition to this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval unanimously.
We have no cards. Are there any questions for Heather?
Move to approve.
A motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Z6?
This is another request in order to develop a single-family home. The surrounding properties are developed with single-family homes and undeveloped properties. The future land use guide is single-family medium-low density, and this request is consistent with the guide. The applicant is requesting this because the property doesn't meet the dimensional setbacks. They could develop a single-family home on this lot, however, it's, it wouldn't allow for the development of a traditional duplex, or even meet the minimum setbacks for a single-family home, so, at the R2 zoning. So, they, so they're asking for this request, and so that they, it can be platted and they can move on with their project.
Yeah, very good.
Of the notices that were sent, none were returned in favor or in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
This is a request to City Council to consider approving an ordinance making an uncontestable finding that all territory included within the city of Tyler since December 31, 1999 be a part of the city. You hear this request from us on an annual basis, and this map demonstrates to you, at the very top north side of the map, you can see the circle, that's the property that was annexed into the city back in 1999, or, you know, leading up to December 31, 1999, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of an ordinance making an uncontestable finding that all territory included within the city of Tyler since December 31, 1999 be part of the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any questions? A motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? I could go a lot faster, you know.
And council, while, we're waiting for Mr. Tremble to come over, the planning staff put together as far as kind of a cheat sheet.
I like this, I told Heather, it's great.
And he lies for zoning as far as discussions, so this will hopefully be very helpful to y'all as they future zoning items and determining what the results. So, we think, especially for-
And is this on the website, so people can also view it?
We can put it on the website.
You put it on the website, I think it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
You don't have to drive by anymore. You have to drive it by.
Yes, sir. O2.
Mayor and Council, you have item O2 before you. It's a request that City Council consider adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 1920 budget, and these are generally items that we began either construction projects or purchases that we began last fiscal year and didn't complete them before fiscal year end. So, we're asking you all to amend the budget so that we can complete these items, and I'll just kind of briefly touch on a few of the items before you. You have the detail in your packet that was presented to you. We had no budget amendments for the general fund, but our General Capital Projects Fund, Fund 102, the budget amendment is approximately $68,000. A large part of that is we didn't complete our ADA sidewalk projects last year, so we'll need to roll those numbers, that budget forward, so that'll give us a total of $100,000 to be spent on this line item in this fiscal year. And those are generally just ADA sidewalk projects that we do around various parts of the city. Our tourism fund, we're asking you to amend the budget by approximately $180,000 for the tourism, and the biggest project located in that that we're asking you to roll forward is some Rose Garden improvements, some fountains and other projects at the Rose Garden, that's approximately $117,000. Our PEG fund, it's about $22,000. We're asking to roll forward there, just for some Liberty Hall upgrades. Our housing assistance program about- Our housing assistance program, about $413,000. A large part of that is just for housing assistance payments. So we're asking you to amend the budget there as well. And then our CDBG, we're trying to roll forward funds there, funds that have over multiple years, and that's about 1.1 million. Our home program, same, same situation there, where we're trying to roll some funds forward of approximately 1.1 million. And then our utilities fund, about 2.1 million there as well. The biggest part of that expenditure will be our water line replacement project. That's about 1.6 million. And then our meter audit and rehab project, about 253,000 there, and then just some other various small projects. Also, the largest part of the amendment that's before you today is our airport fund, and that's approximately 6.6 million. And that's to, basically related to runway 422, Taxi Charlie Foxtrot, and then we've got runway 422 instrument lighting system relocation, and then airport master plan upgrade and fencing insecurity improvement. So it's a total of 6.6 million dollars. Our solid waste capital fund, about 290,000. A large part of that is for restroom rehabilitations at our various parks, Faulkner, Lindsey, Emmett Scott. So we've got funds there. And then our stormwater fund, we're looking at approximately 300,000 just for various projects around town. And productivity fund, 12,000 for Microsoft training software. And then finally, fleet fund, about 527,000 there. We're looking at purchasing a fire department haul truck and a brush truck and a solid waste container delivery truck as well. So having said all of that, it's our recommendation that you all approve the attached ordinance to amend our 1920 fiscal year budget.
Questions? Kedry?
Motion to approve O2.
Motion by Warren.
Second.
Second by Sellers. Any other, no other questions?
He talks about millions like million here.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of honey.
It is.
This is something, of course, I think this is probably my 10th time to do it, and it's really, it's about the same amount of funds every year that we roll over on different projects, especially when we get these large FAA grants.
Sure.
There's large amounts of money. And when he talks about the home and the, that's a lot of federal funds as well that are getting pushed forward. It's not very much. And in the water utilities, of course, that's the business operations side, but there's not a lot of taxpayer money, local taxpayer money being pushed forward. Mainly, it's the large grants and the business operations of the enterprise funds that are pushed forward. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
O3?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'll handle this one.
Great. I was just making sure I didn't have the wrong number again.
This ordinance makes amendments to the general penalty provisions in City Code, Chapter 1. These generally track the state law requirements which are set out in the Texas Local Government Code and other statutes. What this ordinance does, really two things. It clearly distinguishes between those fines that are $500, those that are $2,000 for fire safety, zoning, and public health, $4,000 for the dumping of refuse. And then the state law also contains some specific fines, dollar amounts for certain fines. So the ordinance is amended just to reference that there may be a fine under state law that is different from these other three. The second change is another minor change. Right now, the code contains a list of certain offenses with the maximum and minimum fines in there. That list is really unnecessary as classy misdemeanors are already governed by the state law. So what the ordinance does, it just deletes that list and refers back to the municipal court judges exercising their discretion under state law to lower a fine or increase it, depending on the specific circumstances. And that will always be within the range established by the state law, including Texas Local Government. So at this time, the city staff would recommend the adoption of this ordinance amended Chapter 2 and the penalty provisions.
Right. So it just puts us in compliance with state law and all the changes that the legislature has made?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This will more closely track what's already governed in state law. It just.
Yeah, very good.
Impравes the wording.
Yeah, very good. Any other questions?
Move to approve O3.
Motion by Westbrook.
Second.
Second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M1? Thank you. Is that why you're sitting here today instead of Deborah?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good. Because I saw her in the back. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Item 1 is a request to approve a contract with Half Associates in the amount of $500,000 for the third and final phase of the comprehensive stormwater master plan. If you'll recall, we've been working on this master plan project for the past couple of years. Phase 1 is obviously complete, but that first phase was really all about data collection. They did a significant amount of collecting of data from the city, the county, FEMA, the Corps of Engineers, multiple other sources of data. They collected data from our own GIS system regarding land use, zoning. They collected insurance loss data from FEMA. They collected stuff such as drainage complaints and work orders from our city staff. So they also collected all of our record drawings, got those digitized, geo-referenced, and they're making those available so that eventually they'll be available on our internal website so that if you want to go and pick on a particular asset, any curb inlet, storm drain, you'd be able to click that asset and the plans for that asset would be available. So again, that was the first phase. It was really just a very hard push towards data collection. Phase 2, we're currently in the process of nearing the completion of this phase 2 contract. They took all the data that they collected it, they consolidated it, they started a pilot program or a pilot study of one particular area located here at Bonner and the railroad tracks to study that system, investigate the, any potential flood mitigation solutions. They'll be getting us those results here before too long. They also began the process of taking this citywide data that they collected and starting the process of identifying hotspots, areas that historically have had problems, so that that can be turned into a ranked and prioritized capital improvements list. So as I said, we're nearing the completion of this phase 2 data, and now is the time to start phase 3, again, the final phase. Well, they're, they will be putting all of this together. They'll be taking all that data, the ranked lists, they'll be writing a report, they'll be finalizing their development of these drainage solutions that they've been identifying. They'll be finalizing this list of proposed projects with the rank and priority. They'll be providing the, all of this in a full master plan report. And then finally, they'll be developing guidelines to help us address future updates, addressing the management of all of this data, city policies, project funding, and the like. So again, this is a request to approve this third and final phase.
Yeah, you know, I'm excited about this because we had been in the, we knew that it was going to be a three-phase project, and we were making sure that we had the appropriate funding to move forward on it. One thing that I would request, after May, of course, I won't be here, but my main request is once we get all this data put together, that let's don't just stop. After we get these reports, let's make sure they're continually updated when we do new projects in the community, and they can be put into that data source so we can continue this very valuable information forward for many years, right?
Yes, sir. That's the intention.
Yeah.
Is that a lot of this data, again, is being digitized so that it's going into our GIS system, and that's really the basis for a future asset management system.
Yeah, that's great. Good.
I know, Lisa, you said that this would be used for, as a resource to refer back to and so on, but will we actually utilize this data to take a look at our current engineering practices for wetland development and so on so that we can make some changes in those?
Yes, and that's really specifically what they will be looking at during this third phase.
Good.
Is they'll be looking at our own policies and procedures related to planning and development and zoning, especially in these wetland areas.
Well, it's great that we're at this point. You know, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by McKeller.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
M3? No, M2.
M2. M2 is a request to approve a reconciliation change order in the amount of $447,296.80 as well as to accept the 2018 asphalt enhancement project and release the final payment, which includes retainage in the amount of $149,265.43. So again, a reconciliation change order is a change order that we typically do at the end of every project. This really just reconciles the final quantities against what the original bid quantities were. Sometimes that can be a positive, sometimes it can be a negative. In this case, this project did actually exceed the original budget by this $447,000. That was primarily due to additional trench repair and pipe fittings that were required for the water line repairs that were included in this project. There were also some additional pavement repair than we originally estimated would be required. So that is why the contract was increased by the $447,000. And then again, we're also asking to accept the project and release the final payment back to Reynolds and Kay.
So the money, so the money that's, this $447,000 is for extra work, is not because it was underbid? It was actually extra work that was?
Correct. It was extra work. And, you know, it's typical that during the construction process, things just come up, unforeseen conditions come up that we had no way of knowing about, and sometimes that results in, you know, additional lines or fittings or whatever the case may be than we originally estimated. So where do we pull this fund from? The money that was due to the trench repair and pipe fittings, because that was associated specifically with the water line repairs, that is being paid for out of the Water Utility Capital Fund. The additional pavement repair is being paid for out of the half-cent sales tax fund.
And what's the breakdown in the 447? That's going to the water utility and what's coming out of the half cent?
Yeah, the water utility portion of that is $332,014.29. The remainder, which is being paid for out of the sales tax fund, is $115,282.51.
So the bulk of the increase was the water utility fund?
That's correct.
And water pipe repairs?
Correct.
And I think that's an important piece to note. One of the changes we've made over the past few years has been to incorporate water and wastewater repairs into these projects, into our asphalt enhancement programs of that. Before we go in and put the, especially the new street layer down, that we were able to go in, make the water repairs, wastewater repairs, and sometimes there's some that we find during the project that we didn't know needed to be repaired but do, and go ahead and take care of those at that point before the fresh roads.
Yeah, so you don't have to tear up, yeah, that's, that was a very good shift so we don't have to tear up the street later to do the work.
Right. Correct. Yes, sir.
And so each and every one of those changes were approved as it went along?
That's correct. Staff approved all of these changes.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by McKeller. Second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 3 is a contract amendment with Schaumburg &amp; Polk for the Arbor Oaks Channel Repair Project. If you'll recall, back in October of last year, we awarded an engineering contract to Schaumburg &amp; Polk for the Arbor Oaks Channel Repair Project. That is the repair of an open channel that is in this subdivision from basically Oleander Drive down to where that channel discharges into a natural creek, which is south of Oak Bend Road. While our, our engineering staff was evaluating streets for our upcoming asphalt overlay projects, they noted that these two streets noted in blue, that's portions of Arbor Oak Drive and Persimmon Drive, needed some fairly extensive reconstruction work. This particular subdivision is in an area that is known for having high levels of groundwater, and there's issues with groundwater seeping up through the underside of the road, so the road is starting to fail from the bottom up. So we thought it would be expedient to allow the engineer, Schaumburg &amp; Polk, who is already working on this channel, to design a groundwater collection system for these sections of the roadway and to design the repair of the road and just add it to the channel repair. The groundwater collection systems will eventually flow into some inlet boxes that are going to be part of this channel repair. So because of the proximity of these two issues, we thought it would just be expedient to amend the existing contract to allow them to design and do the construction management for the street repairs as well. And of course, the contract amendment is in the amount of $90,750.
Move to approve again.
Motion by Sellers.
Second.
Second by Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Due to the vacancies on the library board, the city has solicited applications, applicants for city board membership to fill the three positions on the board. So at this time, I'm requesting that the City Council consider appointing members to the Tyler Public Library Board and appointing a chair. And in your packet, we do have Glenda Malone, Melissa O'Neil, and Tammy Burnett as the three applicant, applications that we received to fill those positions.
We have.
And the board has recommended Brenda McWilliams as the chair.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this, like, Cassandra, just.
I'm going to make a motion to approve it, but one thing I want to say, I don't know what is it is about this library, but it seems like, I don't mean it's on fire, but I mean, people are wanting to get on this board. And the library has gotten exciting, and there's, there's different things going on and programs, and, I mean, I'm born and raised here in Tyler, and I've never seen it like this. here in Tyler, and I've never seen it like this, so.
Yeah, I saw on Facebook last night a passport meeting they're having at the library to?
They have passports, there is one I'll probably include in the tidbits later, or for today, about the, when we opened, as far as the new housing voucher list, and just the work that they did in putting the, Ashley Taylor, our library director, is the person who's lighting the fire over there to get them to that library, to just be as exciting as it is, and it has such an exciting staff. That is, that is an incredible, kind of as far as just a resource that we have in our community, and Ashley and her staff are just amazing in what they are doing over there to get all generations, for everybody in this community, to have something that they can do over there.
And they have such creative ideas, things that people are really interested in.
They truly do.
We just need to make sure she knows we appreciate her.
We will pass that on. Have her watch this whole council meeting just to get to the end of it.
I make a motion to approve the slate is proposed.
Motion by Warren, a second by McKeller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Cassandra?
Aye.
B two? Are you doing B two?
No, sir, Heather, leave.
Oh, okay.
Heather, if you want.
I was hoping to get you up front for B two.
It's that time to reappoint some members to our tax increment reinvestment zone, number one. We have, as the administrator of the zone, the Tyler Economic Development Council requests that the City Council reappoint Mrs. Kathy Harry, Ms. Sidney Green, and Tanya Reddick, and to reappoint Dean Kagle, or another representative, as chairman of the board. New membership terms for these three representatives run from this month, 2020, through January 1, 2022, and for the chairmanship position, it's a one-year term, so that will expire in January of 2021. And with that, we are asking that you appoint these members as presented.
Any questions?
Move to approve B two as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Now we're to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, second by, second by McGee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. City Manager, report?
Mayor and Council, a couple of items. One of the ones that we want to brag about is our police department, recently, members of the Community Response Unit completed the required training for police bicycle officers. The program was initiated to supplement existing bicycle patrols, work on problem areas, engage in community outreach. This past Saturday, and it was a beautiful Saturday, it was, they rode Rose Rudman for about three hours, it was a beautiful day, and they talked to kids and parents in the park. Collectively, they handed out 90 police stickers, and so are extremely proud of their efforts and their commitment to increase the, as far as interaction between the police department and our community. A couple of events coming up for council is the Tyler Trees Committee, Keep Tyler Beautiful, and the Tyler Parks and Recreation Department will host a tree planting event to celebrate Arbor Day on this Saturday, January 25, at 9:30 a.m. at Faulkner Park. The registration begins at nine, and then more than 50 trees will be planted at Faulkner Park during this event. Publics invited to bring their own shovels and volunteer to be part of this experience. And then finally, the City of Tyler Fire Department invites you to the open houses of their two newest fire stations. There'll be a short opening ceremony and reception, followed by station tours. Station Four Open House over on Cherry Hill Drive will be February 3, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m., and then Station One Open House over here at Gentry and Palace will be over on February 7, that Friday, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. And so we'll have, I think, invites to you all on that, but just to know that you all in the community are invited to attend those, as far as that major events.
Thank you very much, and no other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And I did forget to mention, but the half-cent, as far as report that was passed out of the half-cent meeting, is for you all to take and review.